It's uh, it's just go to the public site, it's there's no code at all. Water?
Sure.
Water?
Nice, full service.
Exactly. We have one please.
I almost didn't say. I turned around and remembered.
Just go to the public site?
Yeah, we'll do it.
And you'll be connected.
Excellent.
Thanks so much, Chris.
Thank you.
I'm gonna retreat to my cave.
Oh, you don't wanna sit next to David?
I'll leave him in the center. I get to sit here in front of him.
I like the closet run slow, that helps me.
Okay.
Let's wait for Dave.
I read, I read everything already, it's just a minute left on the line. So I'm glad I brought mine down.
Christian, you know you have two minutes now if you're sitting there.
I forgot my laptop.
Oh yeah.
Oh, thank you, Dave.
I'm not covering, do you want?
No?
No, I was covering the last five days.
Great, but so much.
Oh, did you?
I'll take, what is, did one stand out for him? I'll take that part.
Yeah.
Has there been two?
Somebody's been drinking out of that.
Oh, but you definitely don't want to.
Alright.
I don't have water.
Alright, good evening.
I'll leave pets too.
Yeah, somebody drank out of that one. This is mine, this is.
Oh, it is yours? Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Important business. It's seven oh three on Wednesday, February twenty fifth. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. Although we're in a different location tonight, we're borrowing the home of the Board of Selectmen. We are typically both recorded audio and visual. And we start the meeting with, of course, a call to order and roll call. Can have a roll call?
Aye, aye, lean leave, present.
Present, President Jean Estino.
President Paul Schurick.
President Mary Voldrick.
President Paul Newbany. I'd like everyone to join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Wait behind you.
There's our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As is our custom, we invite anyone in the audience to speak about topics of new business. And of course, if the topic is gonna be covered on the agenda, we can wait until it gets covered.
Yeah, thanks, forgotten.
Good evening, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Ellen Morris, sixty-three Old pasture road. I'd just like to provide the committee with an update on our career night at Cohasset Middle High School. It was brought up that, you know, we were looking into doing something like this several meetings ago and working with the C E F and the P S O and other community members and Mrs. Conley from the high school. We are in the final stretches of this coming to fruition. It's on, and some of you are participating as panelists. It's Tuesday night, March tenth, six thirty to nine at Cohasset Middle High School. We have, as of this evening, forty-four community members who are going to be panelists. And we're breaking them up into different sections, like occupations, we have attorneys, we have the medical profession, we have a myriad of business professionals, running from tech to marketing to sales to entrepreneurship to education. We have, we have a pretty wide breadth of offerings. And we're collecting, they're bios now. Our plan is to give a packet to the students so they can select which groups interest them and where they think they might want to, you know, attend those. Students will be able to attend four sessions during the evening, we'll run four, four sessions. We think we're gonna have twelve panels, so they'll pick from the twelve which four they wanna attend to. And the community response, I think, has been fantastic, really fantastic. And everyone is very excited about this opportunity for the kids to really kinda figure out, oh, what is it that that person does? Oh, you know, and hear it firsthand. So as they begin their college search process and trying to figure out what they wanna do, this might help them say, oh, this guy really liked his job, he was very passionate about it. Maybe I wanna talk to him a little bit more. We'll have an opportunity at the end of the evening for one-on-one, for, you know, kids to talk to adults one-on-one if they wish, so we hope it will be beneficial to the kids.
That's great, well, thank you for all your work organizing it. I, for one, owe you a bio. And perhaps others on our committee will be there as well.
Yeah, I'm presenting, this is the call.
I know it's also particularly useful, I know firsthand, right now, we are actually in the process of hiring someone in our own company where she, six years ago, attended a career night and listened to a panel that similarly I was on. And it turns into a job for her. So for many of these people, you never know what could happen. It could ultimately not only be an interesting learning experience, but a productive job search six years early. So it's great.
Just have a quick question. How are the, are, how are, are the kids being invited, encouraged? Is it required, their attendance, how's all that going?
Invited, encouraged to attend. It was on the newsletter, Mrs. Conley sent out this past week.
Yeah, I've seen that a few times.
And she will begin talking it up, it's open to kids grades nine through twelve, recognizing that most of the seniors have already made their college commitments. But as we all know, in this day where, you know, colleges and universities are really looking for majors, kids to declare their majors very early, even with the seniors, this, this could be helpful. So it's gonna be, you know, how do I say, if those kids go, everyone's gonna wanna go.
Yeah.
So there's no, there's no incentive or anything like that to go. But I, I think it's, I think the kids will go and network a little bit and really kinda figure, oh, you know, this is, this interests me.
No, I think it's wonderful that it's finally off the ground, so thank you for spearheading that.
Sure.
You just may wanna give them a few days before, like, an idea of, you know, who's presenting and what panels, so on the day of, they don't have to, oh, God, where to wake up.
Yeah, Mrs. Conley and I discussed that we would hand out the bios, all the panelists are writing up bios and I, I have several, the Thursday or Friday before, so they have the weekend to review it and they'll be organized by panel and they'll have the schedule.
That's great.
So they'll know panel one is in whatever classroom and, and they'll know where to go. And they can really take some time to, to look at it and.
Yeah, and I, I got some handouts from the American Psych Association.
Okay, great.
Great, so would it be helpful if we put a blackboard message out to the nine through twelve parents to help promote it?
I think Mrs. Conley has that in her plans.
She's got it covered, huh?
Yeah, she's got, she's got it, we're gonna ramp it up slowly, you know, because, as we all know, people don't like to plan, so, you know, the week, the week before will be the most critical in terms of getting the word out to the kids. And it's, sports haven't started, spring sports haven't started, winter sports have ended, yeah. So.
Great.
Shall we remind us, is it March tenth?
Yes, Tuesday, March tenth.
And what is the time again?
It's going to begin, the first panels will start at six thirty, we're, you know, we're sending out instructions to the panelists to arrive, six fifteen, we'll have them all using the auditorium and kind of explain what the night is gonna be like. I have some volunteers lined up to escort panelists around and we'll be hitting up the C E F for some waters and things like that, or, and the P S O. Cause it, it is six thirty, so a lot of people will be coming right from work, so we wanna make sure that we take care of our volunteers.
That's great.
The, the one good thing about the career panel is that a lot of the kids that are going into college, they may be looking at a career path that, they may be getting an English major or a liberal arts degree or a science degree. And they may see the people that are there, what they went to college for may be entirely different of what is their career path and what they've done in their, in their career. So that, it's kind of a nice way to look at, not only did they study a certain career path and now they're doing this, it gives them a little more perspective that it's not, once you're in a given career path, you're, you're gonna be that.
Right, we, we talked about having a panel of career changers. You know, people who, who started out in one area and ended up another. And myself, I, that's happened in my career, so we're not quite there yet. I'm not participating, you know, as the organizer of the event, but it is, I, I think that's a great point is that nothing is forever, you don't have to, but as we all know, you know, education costs are, are high. And to come out and say, oh, I really don't wanna do what I studied, is kind of a problem, you know. You know, financially for, for people, so if we can give kids at least a background of things, maybe they'll find out what they don't like as much as what they like.
That's a great, a great thing.
So years ago, the school board had, the seventh and eighth grade, they had various persons come in from the community and give lectures. Had Dr. Siri, they had, for example, had a certain, at week, we, each week, and there was, well, maybe twenty, thirty different, forty different kinds of positions that they talked about. And that was also very helpful in the seventh and eighth grade period before they went into selecting their courses for ninth through twelve. So that's another way to do it, but I think this is excellent.
Excellent. Well, thank you, and for the record, that was Selectmen guest B for the audience who does not see her.
I am taking notes tonight, we still haven't hired the note taker, so.
Excellent.
Great.
Just talk slowly.
And we do also, for the record, we have an absence tonight.
Yes.
Superintendent Cataldo is on a conference trip and she wasn't able to attend tonight. So we'll welcome her back next week. Okay, so moving on to the, to the next item on the agenda, we have an approval of the October one and the February eleven minutes. So we, certainly we'll have some discussion, but we'll, we'll have a motion to approve the minutes of October one, two thousand fourteen. Will we have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mary. All, I guess, discussion?
Uh, yes, I do have a change. Under approval of minutes of August sixth, this says, hold on a minute. Mrs. Estino indicated that she would like a report on the superintendent's progress for her dissertation to be included as part of her evaluation. I did not request that because that's inappropriate. I did request a progress report on her doctorate, so I would like that corrected. I didn't, I did not.
Not as part of her evaluation?
It was not as part of her evaluation, it was a separate item.
Okay.
And it's just a little typo on the last page, under the Policy and Standards Subcommittee met. They're working on the fingerprinting policy. Another meeting has been scheduled for the October fourteenth. So the word "the" should be stricken.
Okay.
Just very simple.
Okay. Subject to those.
Take out that or the?
Take out "the."
Mariah?
On the last page, in the middle, under Policy and Standards Subcommittee.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just a little typo.
That's pretty good.
Right.
Yep.
Subject to those modifications, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Approved. February eleventh minutes.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve February eleventh.
Aye, a second?
I'll second.
From Mary? And discussion?
I'm confused about the contents of our packets. Because, and I think that we have another part to this, but I did run into Mrs. Pescatori in town and I just, you know, in conversation asked her how she was doing on the, her progress on the minutes because she had been asked, and she's provided three sets of minutes, but we only have one.
Two.
No, these were not from her, these are from Mrs. Cataldo and from the last meeting.
The October one is, is?
The October one is from Mrs. Pescatori.
Okay.
And she's provided two others after the October first. So it'll be the second meeting in October and then probably the first one in November.
Okay.
But they're not in the packet.
So I know that the superintendent and I were trying to catch each other today and she said it was about the minutes, so there's probably some explanation for that which we could not connect.
Okay.
Her traveling and my just being unavailable, so we'll get an explanation next week for them.
All right, and there are no recordings on the website, on the town website, since November or December? So I have not reviewed these.
Okay.
Because I, I wanna make sure that they're accurate, particularly since we did not have an official minutes taker. I would prefer to make sure that I go through them more thoroughly than I can just proofreading them.
Okay.
Because there was a lot of discussion at that meeting. So I just wanna make sure that we didn't, didn't miss anything.
That was a really long meeting.
It was a very long meeting.
Yeah, like four hours.
Okay, so shall we table the, these minutes?
Yeah, make a motion to.
Not to table, not to table, not to table them.
To delay discussion.
Postpone.
Postpone the discussion on that meeting. Okay.
For the February eleventh meeting?
Yes.
For the February eleventh.
February eleventh.
Make a motion.
Please.
Let's have a proper motion, perhaps.
Okay. I make a motion to postpone the meetings of February eleventh, two thousand and fifteen.
The review of the meeting minutes. Okay, that's the, wait a second.
I'll second.
Mary again. All in favor of postponing the review of the February eleventh minutes?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I have a comment.
Comment from the audience?
Katie Dugan, one hundred Black Rock Road. I just wanted to comment on the publicly available access to the video recordings. It has been delayed since, honestly, the fall in terms of getting those recordings, so I second Jean for those of us that can't make all of them, there has to be a better mechanism to get them up there in a timely manner. I think for you to wait, at this point, we'd be waiting, you know, a couple months. There's a lag of two or three months in terms of when those recordings get up there. So we need a better mechanism. I understand that this office, it, this office here, the Selectmen, is really the only ones that can do the upload.
Well, maybe now.
They're not doing them at the cable companies, so there's been delays. There needs to be a better mechanism, both for you in order of being able to approve the minutes and for the general public to get access.
Agreed, and I'd say both the minutes are, obviously, we're working on approving it set from October one, so the minutes are greatly in arrears and it sounds like the videos are too, so in terms of process improvement, maybe after Jean's comment, we can ask you, Dave, if you have any ideas?
Sure. The chief technology officer is the person who posted them on YouTube previously. That's, that was the process, they came from, from one four three because they're the ones that actually record them in their studio. And then they went to him for some kind of reorganization or, you know, whatever they do to them to make them ready for prime time. And then he would post them on YouTube. So it's been quite some time, though, since that's happened. And I have been looking for them. I do, I do record them to the best of my ability at home, but it doesn't always work out for me to watch them at home.
The Selectmen ones are getting up, though.
I'm sorry?
The Selectmen videos are getting up, and so there's a disconnect from a process perspective as to, it wasn't always the town C T O, as I know, some of the Selectmen videos were getting posted and school committees were not, and so that was, again, it's not great even on the Selectmen side in terms of the timeline, but it's been worse on the school.
I think December, I think December for the Selectmen too, maybe. Because I was looking around and I couldn't, I couldn't access any recordings at first on my iPad and then I did find some earlier today. So we do, we do need to address that.
There is a process issue.
Right, I mean, I think the schools depend on the technology department to do it for us, but we may, we probably need somebody else that can do it also, if that can't be done by, you know, so. We'll look, we have to look into that.
Okay.
Maybe an idea would be as we identify a new minutes taker, maybe it's someone who's ideally without a little technology savvy, it's not that complicated to.
Well, I don't know if it's that complicated, it's just that we don't have anybody that's been trained to do that.
Maybe that person's responsibility should be there.
Yeah.
As are hers. Okay. Great, so in our packets, just in case it was confusing, there were just some sample minutes as we looked to hire a new note taker and video uploader. We had looked at some, I guess, minutes that the M A S C thought were particularly exemplary in North Andover, so.
I just have a quick question, because we're going out of order for the agenda. Oh, right.
Thanks, yeah, okay, we'll cover that next. Alright, so good, so we're moving on to the minutes and then we'll go into the superintendent's report. And we'll cover that minutes discussion there.
So under the superintendent's report, we have Deb Beal here from Little High School to talk about the Cohasset Youth Triathlon.
Yeah, come on.
Devonville, come on up.
How are you? I'm feeling larger by the minute. I will not be participating in the youth triathlon.
Alright, not this year.
Actually, I probably could.
Uh, don't do it.
July.
Just for the record, can we state your, your names, please?
Deb Beal, Eleven Situate, at sixty New Driftway.
And I'm Bill Burnett with, at Eleven Linden Drive.
We came tonight, we have already presented to the Selectmen this youth triathlon on July eleventh, which we did last year as the first year. So we came tonight to ask for your approval to use school grounds again. We used, the triathlon based itself at the swim center. We used the pool up there, then the kids went up and they looped around the Deer Hill, Osgood parking lot on their bikes, and then they went back up and they ran on those same grounds. It's not a use of building, it's just a use of road. The entire road will be closed off.
I know, it was a great event last year, I, my daughter had the, we had the pleasure of watching her participate and a jealous son who now will participate this year. So everybody loved it and it was a great success. I don't know if we, we can make your lives very simple, perhaps, and all make a motion, perhaps, to approve the.
Yeah, what's the question, what's the date of it?
Yeah, so Saturday, July the eleventh. That was perfect, Deb, my, my, my question also is, who would we talk to, to ensure that there's, if there was any activities going on that Saturday morning, right? If the.
Could be sports.
Christian, you mentioned something about.
If there was something else going on at the schools.
It was, yeah, it would be like a summer camp kind of thing, but it's a Saturday morning.
Or something, there was a meeting going on or something.
Yeah, usually.
There's no youth basketball, there's no field hockey.
Usually nothing in the summer or the weekends, but.
So maybe, maybe it's okay, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that, yeah.
We'll chat, I'll chat with you, but, but essentially it's making sure it's on hold, if you will.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's safe around, around, around the school.
So are you using the parking lot, is that what you did last year? I don't recall the.
I don't remember the exact route, cause I was, I was on transitionary with that, it was my job.
Do you wanna take that question? I'll take that?
Yeah, you're good.
Oh, I'll take that. So basically, you're calling, you come up Sawyer, you're going, making a left into the back parking lot behind Deer Hill.
Behind Deer Hill.
Going around Deer Hill, pass, passing the basketball courts.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, and then once you get back on to the, the access road, I guess you call it, you make a left going back.
Up Sawyer, up.
Exactly, that's right, so it's just really the back, it's just Deer Hill, the back of Deer Hill.
Okay.
That's right. I mean, it's just a bike, because the run itself actually just goes up, it goes up, it's just a bike, that's all.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, do you use the, the facilities at Deer Hill at all, just for restaurants or nothing?
Nothing. Nothing.
Oh, wow.
So the building doesn't need to be open for, for any.
No, nothing, that's right.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, cool question, what's the timing of it?
Timing of it. It will, good, that's right, that's good, so it'll, the event starts at eight thirty. Sawyer will close at approximately eight fifteen. We have details at the library intersection and then also up towards Fair Oaks in three A. So it's from eight fifteen to about ten thirty, Sawyer will be closed for general access. But, but as we've mentioned to the Selectmen, the emergency vehicles can get through, any, residents can get through if they have to get through, right? Does that answer, so just, and essentially then, then the road will open up at ten thirty, maybe even sooner. Everything will open up and it's all, it's all good to go.
And that's a, excuse me, a Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Deb, we had, it was wonderful, we had two hundred, a little over two hundred this, last year. I think, well, we, we, we can, the permit is for up to four hundred kids if, if we still get to that number. That's, that's at the high side. Yeah.
That's great, is it regional draw or just, it's not just Cohasset?
No, we got all over, we got all over, absolutely.
There were some very serious little kids, it was funny. Some very not serious little kids.
That's right, that's right.
It was a lot of fun.
It's good, yeah.
Excellent, exciting, well, thanks for, for doing that.
We're good?
We'll add a motion out to the.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the use of the Deer Hill exterior areas, you know, like the roads and stuff for July eleventh, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll second it.
Second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you all. Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Thank you.
Can't wait for July. Maybe this will, maybe July.
Good, okay, so back to minutes, we go from very exciting triathlons to minutes. And we, we have in our packet.
So there are two sample minutes in the packet. One is from actually the Board of Selectmen and Cohasset Minutes. I don't know if you all know Tracy Carter, she's, takes the minutes at each of the meeting, meetings. And then there's a sample minute from North Andover School Committee. And it looks like the minutes from North Andover are more of a summary type minutes, more brief. And the Cohasset Board of Selectmen are more in-depth, I think, so. I'm not sure if Barbara was meant to, you know, exceed one, one end to the other, but.
My, my sense was that these were here just to kind of help us point the new minutes taker, when he or she gets assigned, to a direction of, you know, what, what good minutes, according to the M A S.
What the committee is really looking for, I'm sorry.
And then for us to talk about what we're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess if, you know, if there's anything, maybe we could just take this as a couple minutes of a free for discussion, where is there anything that we want in the minutes? Do we think the right amount of detail, too little, too much in our current minutes? What do we think?
I think that the current minutes have been fantastic. We've had four minutes takers in the time that I've been on the school committee and I think that Mrs. Pescatoris have done the best. You know, minimal corrections, I think that they're, they're detailed enough, but not crazy over the edge detailed as some of them have been. I think she's done a fabulous job and I think that we should look for someone who can continue that.
And I just wanted to go through the Robert's Rule of Order as far as minutes go. One of the comments is, is it necessary to summarize matters discussed at a meeting in the minutes of that meeting in order for the minutes to be complete? And the, according to Robert's Rules of Parliamentarian Discussion, is that it's not only not necessary to summarize matters discussed at a meeting in the minutes of the meeting, it is improper to do so. So minutes are a record of what's going on in a meeting and not a record of what is said, so there's, there's the requirements and then there's what we can add in. So the, the minimum is, you need to have the votes, you need to have who's present, you need to have what was covered in the agenda. But from the legality point of view and the parliamentarian point of view, they can be quite brief.
Okay. Good, okay.
I mean, I would just add a quick comment, if we can, hopefully in the next few weeks or month, get to a place where the, the video can be uploaded in a timely manner. I am all for condensing a little bit our minutes while remaining accurate, of course. I just, my concern is, is at some points, not when Mrs. Pescatori was doing them, but we spent, we've just spent a lot, a lot of time, which didn't seem particularly the best use of our time.
It's not.
And since there is a, a video recording of them, I think as, as long as we cover the pertinent facts and can get through them in an efficient manner during the meeting, that would be great. Because I, I just, on a regular basis, I don't think we should be spending more than five minutes of that on them.
Right.
Excellent.
But I, I will say that some of the past note takers have not done such a great job of condensing. And I understand that that's the problem and I absolutely agree with you that it should be a summary of what's said, it's, it's not a transcript by any stretch of the imagination. But we should be able to flip through and say, oh, yes, that, you know, there should be some key points and they should always be accurate. So that's why I take such great pains going through them, because they haven't been accurate. But this year has been good and actually the first year, the second year that I was on the committee, Mrs. Pescatori took the notes back then too and did a fabulous job, so. We need to look for someone who aspires to do the same.
Yeah.
Your second year, that, that was yours chair, right?
Yeah, when we were looking for.
Right, I think the important thing is that whomever is hired to do it, there's a very clear directive about what we're looking for.
Right.
Yes.
And if we can all be in agreement about that, then we can.
Absolutely.
Move forward swimmingly.
That's great.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
I, I would like to add, though, I just glanced, I was a little confused and I figured that that was probably the reason that these were included. I, I would like to add though, I just glanced, I was a little confused, and I figured that that was probably the reason that these were included. But, these are similar to what we get now, with the Andover, North Andover School Committee Minutes, they're very similar to what we get now, and I think they're great. You know, it has just enough information, not too much, not too little, it covers key points without seeing an agenda. It would have been helpful to have an agenda side by side, but just kind of go through and, and see, but, I mean, they, they look similar to what we've been getting, and I think that that's a good, a good thing to look toward.
Good.
Was there something else?
Did that say for me?
I guess, uh, someone's objecting to hear.
You'll be the first person.
Yeah, so maybe what we could do is, um, uh, ju- again, maybe just have, when we find somebody, uh, as we just stressed what, all we've just said through the hiring process, I assume Dave, uh, are you the hiring manager there of that board?
Barbara will be, yeah, yeah.
Barbara, okay, so we'll just reinforce this messaging.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good, and, I really do think it would be nice if the person could be responsible for uploading the video.
Yeah, uploading of the video, too.
And, you know, completing the minutes, maybe even, maybe they even stay an extra hour, finish that night, or do it the next day, or however long it takes, but,
They're not, if it's somebody who's employed in the district, they're supposed to do them outside of the regular workday, they're receiving a stipend that's separate from their salary.
Right.
So, it really should not be done at the desk during the course of the day.
It's, exactly, I was even suggesting maybe it's, they do it after the meeting.
I would assume, do it in the,
Oh, I see.
Right away, so it's fresh in your mind, and what's going on.
Uh, until, until that's, nice.
Well, right, then it's obvious.
Yeah, that would be hard.
Okay, good, um, so then, we're moving on to the next topic?
Yeah.
Okay. School days.
Next item, um, on the agenda, calendar, snow days.
Snow days, yeah.
So, in your packet, there is a weekly update from Commissioner Mitchell Chester.
He also had a, um, they interviewed him on TV.
Oh, did they, yeah, yeah.
Yes, I listened to the whole thing.
So, he's given us, um, some guidelines on how to make up snow days. And I don't think, I don't think there's anything new that we don't know about, or that, that the committee didn't talk about, uh, last time.
Right, we have this information.
I think you have the same information, right?
Totally.
So, um, where do we stand with, uh, are we at eight, eight makeup days right now?
So, seven days.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, okay, and that will take us through, uh,
I believe there's two left, two days.
June twenty sixth.
In,
June twenty sixth.
June remaining.
And June twenty sixth would be scheduled to be a half day, because the last day of school is a half day.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That'd be Friday.
And we have to,
Friday.
We have to April first to, um, to be home free, so to speak, because after April first, we don't have to make those up.
Right.
Is that the understanding?
Uh, yes, after March thirty first, which is April first.
So, if we have an April Fool's Day blizzard again, we're, we're good.
We're good.
And just for people who might be listening or might not be familiar,
You'll use all your five snow days, which we've already, right?
Which we were.
It, so we have, um, two issues here, one is that, um, we've used seven snow days or, or weather delayed days, and we need to make them up. So, that takes our schedule through Friday, June twenty sixth, half day. Because, on the other hand, we have a, a contractual restraint, uh, that where, uh, we have to end the school year, uh, by June thirtieth. Uh, that means, in theory, if we went into days eight and days nine for snow, then we would be butting up against June thirtieth, and that tenth day would put us over the top into July.
Right.
Which is insane to think about, but, and you're not allowed to do it.
You can't do that, it's not,
You're not allowed to, right.
No.
So, um, it looks like, uh, you know, we're getting very close to having an issue, uh, not only contractually, of course, we already have an issue moving late into June, but, um,
Right, which was tough on, which was tough on the students.
It's tough on students, families, teachers, yeah.
Teachers.
And, and was the survey make monkey sent out?
The survey monkey was sent out this week, Monday, uh, it was today or Monday.
Today.
Today, they made it.
Today, so we don't have the results.
That's today, we'll,
We don't have the results.
We'll have the results, we believe.
It was actually sent out Tuesday, the twenty fourth, and it ends on, uh, noon, two twenty seven.
Sent today.
I go to today, yeah.
Maybe it's still, but,
Parents for today.
Maybe the parents, is that what that is?
Okay, so teachers, teachers.
Yeah, teachers, guys, I'm talking teachers, right, sorry, they got us, so, right.
I got it.
Okay.
So, we sent a series of specific questions to both teachers and to, um, parents, the idea being, um, you know, teachers have, um, their own plans that they may be making and may not be available for, if we were to shift the schedule, and similarly, families have the same issues, and they may not be the same. So, we wanted to not blend the results of a survey all in one, we wanted to kind of separate them out.
Yeah.
And, uh, I guess we'll get those results, I think, at the first meeting in March.
Probably by next, which is next Wednesday, yeah, hopefully.
And is one of the suggestions what Commissioner, um, Chester's, uh, suggested, and that's convert scheduled professional development days into school days for students?
Yes.
Yeah, that was one good.
But we've already, already used it.
But I, I believe we've used all our whole days, yes, yeah.
Yeah, we've already done that, so we can't do that anymore, uh, so that's out.
Right.
And in most districts, Saturday is the least acceptable option, like, least, least, uh, reasonable, and the length of the day, um, according to what, um, I was listening on television, he really shies against, people doing that, yeah, and he's willing to ascertain, you know, like, uh, review any creative innovative ideas.
He, he doesn't, he's not happy about that, you have to, Right.
But, I, I was trying to think of something, but there's not a whole lot to do that, you know, you just can't take from the air.
There's not that many days left.
Right.
Um, I think that we should really take, uh, a good look at next year's calendar, as it's being planned.
One of the suggestions is, is done before Labor Day.
And move those full day profi-, but also, well, next year, Labor Day is very late.
Yeah, we already did it.
So, we already did that, yeah.
So, we've looked at that, but I think that we really need to look at those full professional days and move them to a different time, you know, either before the children start, or after the children, probably not after they finish.
I think the way, I think why we, I think why we do it, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Louise, but why we do it at the beginning of the year is so that we can take advantage of what was done on those professional days in the classroom for the remainder of the year.
Right, right, so what I'm saying is, if we had those full professional days even earlier in the year, you know, the days when the teachers come back to school, you, right, before the students are in school, maybe we could work something out for that, so that,
Oh, before the students come down. I thought you would actually use them as a school day, bring that up.
We don't lose those full days for the students' participation and attendance.
Right. One thing that I learned that I thought was kind of unusual is that, if you have, yeah, if you have a half day, professional day,
Is that clear?
I think I said it's,
Yes. It counts as a full day.
It counts for a full day, but if you want to take away that half day, professional day and use it, it doesn't count as a full day.
Correct.
So, it's, it's, I don't know, understand the logic there at all, but, uh,
I don't know why that, that's,
One half does need to be mentioned.
I, I could explain that to you, you mean the early release days, those are, they're really not half days, if we look at the hours,
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
The, uh, middle high school is released at eleven thirty-ish, eleven forty, that is probably as equal a half day, the other schools really only have an hour and a half.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's not, it's about a third of the day, it doesn't qualify as a half.
But if you were to, uh, cancel the, uh, professional development that would be going on and turn that into a school day, I understand that it doesn't count for a full school day.
Correct.
But it does count for a full school day if you're getting early release.
After eleven thirty.
Okay, so,
That's the mark.
Okay. So, equally confused still.
It is not, it's not, it's not split, people ain't half, that's the point, it's, if it was half and half, you've got four hours in your half day, and you've got two hours in your, in your early release.
I,
Correct.
Right.
So, it, you, you're missing a two, you're missing two hours in your early release to have it count for, you need four hours for it to count as a full day. You've got four hours in the morning, and you've got two hours in the afternoon for early release, and you took the early release hours and melded it back into the schedule, you're missing two hours
That's it.
in order to count it for a, a full day.
For a full day.
I think what you're saying is if you could extend it to three thirty, then you would have the four and four, making up a day.
Right.
Uh, Commissioner Chester said, don't think about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
He doesn't like the idea of extending the day.
He doesn't like that you're wasting your time.
He just doesn't think that, that there's a lot of quality time spent in that way.
Okay.
Right. I mean, he would look at a wave or according to his planner, yeah, but you'd have to be very specific, uh, show him that the kids would be getting something out of those extended hours.
I think it pays a lot of attention.
Correct. Yeah.
And the guy was, if there's a half day, or, uh, half, early release day with a professional half day, if that is a snow day, you gotta make it up as a full day.
Right, right.
So, it,
And the, yes, and the other interesting thing mathematically speaking, um, making, uh, you know, people were thinking like next year, combining the vacations and making just one March, but you only gain three days that way. Because April vacation and February vacation both have a holiday, so, you know, and that's like a huge impact on families for only three days.
There's a holiday.
Yeah.
Holiday holidays, right.
Right.
They don't gain the full two weeks.
Well, I think that MCAS, the scheduling dates of MCAS preclude joining those two anyway.
And, we did that one year and it didn't work out well.
I think you need like a five-year advance notice, and every other district has to do it with you.
Yeah, it was, it was when Mark Kidder was, uh, chair of the school board and, and his kids, uh, protested every day at their house.
Yeah.
But it's,
Yeah.
But historically, it wasn't just people wanting to take vacations, it was more about things that go on, like extracurricular things, that, you know, tryouts for various sports and various activities and, um, training for summer jobs for, like, internship kind of opportunities for some of the students
Right.
happen during the April vacation, for example, and the February vacation is, um, I believe it's softball or baseball tryouts.
Mm-hmm, right. Right.
So, making those team decisions, it, it's a problem because you have to take your kid out of school, because all the other school districts have it.
Right, I think it'll be very interesting to see what, uh, to hear from the parents and the community members, you know, the stakeholders.
Yeah, that survey will be interesting.
And, and, because I think in something like this, it's really helpful to, to respond to the community, so, it'll be very interesting.
Oh, I was just gonna ask if, um, strategically, long-term, I mean, you can't make the decision for next year, but combining, you know, the February and April in, into a March break, you just commented, you only save three days, but we're talking about if we hit three more days, snow days, we're gonna be in trouble, so, three days is significant, and I, I don't think it's,
We have problems with the MCAS.
But, but I don't think it's, it's a, it's a district topic, I, I don't know if the superintendent can bring it up, or if it's a topic of conversation at that level statewide.
Right.
Because the MCAS, I mean, if enough districts get together and say, this is what we want to do, they, they, they could move the MCAS, it's not, they're not made in stone, those dates, they, they could work around it. Cause I don't think going another week in June, the, the academic, um, rigor is gonna be any greater than it would be, y- you know, not having a, a February or an April break.
And the other idea i- is possibly, you have your February or April break, yeah, but one of those you don't have as long.
Bingo.
You know, that was my idea, you know, uh, talking to parents, that seems to be a very popular idea, but like I said, I didn't have the best sample size, it's not like I, you know, surveyed seven thousand five hundred and some odd people, I probably asked about forty or fifty people, so, but it was kind of like random, so, it was very interesting, and that seemed to be a ve- very popular, so, I, I, we'll see what happens.
Yeah, Louise.
I think that's, it's a very good point to talk about changing those, and we have to keep in mind that MCAS may not be here, and if indeed it's parked, it's an entirely different window.
Right.
And it's a longer window, and it will be something that may mandate that we can or cannot, so, I, I would think that we would have to wait to see how that plays out.
Good, okay, well, anyway, we'll talk more about it, uh, next week after the surveys come in, uh, and, uh, looking forward to the feedback.
Turn for good weather, four weeks, it's a week.
Yes, hopefully, no.
And, and the commissioner is allowing flexibility with MCAS this year.
It is an, an option to extend, which we have applied for.
Cool.
Good, good.
It's good to apply.
Moving on to, uh, finance, also from Dave.
Wow, we're here quickly.
Yeah.
Request of the committee to approve warrant fifteen dash fourteen S.
Mm-hmm.
This is a state who has taken a look at them.
I have.
Thank you, Dave, thank you, Jean, uh, without issue, uh, can we have a motion, please, to review warrant, um, fifteen dash fourteen Sierra?
I will make a motion to approve warrant fifteen dash fourteen S, I do have comments, though, after the vote is taken.
Okay, it's a roll call vote, please, second.
Second.
Second thing.
Ah, lean lead, yes.
Gina Stino, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Mary McGoldrick, aye.
Paul Nivani, aye.
Who seconded, that was over.
Paul, yeah.
Okay, and you had some comments?
I do, I have some comments, um, I just wanna make the committee aware that in this warrant and in the previous warrant, uh, we had purchased iPads. And I know that they're purchased with grant money, but I think that it's important that the committee understands that, you know, we are making those purchases. I had requested previously, um, a full accounting of the IT budget and expenditures to date, and I didn't get it, it was just as much my fault as anybody else's. Um, it, I, we either had a snow day or something came up on the day that I was, the week that I was planning on going to look, so I do still look that day.
Of course, we have it though, from the digital learning committee.
Right, right, but, I mean, the digital, I, I do need to look more carefully at that information on where we stand for this year. Um, so, I wanted to make that comment, and also,
I'm sorry, before you move to the next comment, so, do, do you feel like, I mean, that is about as mo- most thorough document I think we've ever seen?
Yeah, no, I, no, I didn't look at that part.
Do you need anything else, or you're good, okay.
No, I'll, I'll, and I will let Mr. Dejanara know if there's anything else that I do wanna look at.
Yeah.
So, no action.
I think it's all in there, yeah.
It's all in that excellent digital learning committee presentation, color coded, uh, you'll love it.
Okay. I know, lots of, lots of tabs.
Thank you.
Uh, and then the second comment that I wanted to make is the legal bill this month is ridiculous.
It's very high. Well, it's not ridiculous.
And we're not even really in full negotiations yet, so we need to really watch that.
Yes, absolutely, nobody, nobody likes to talk to the lawyers, um, and I personally, I do rarely, uh, converse, because,
Yeah, your name wasn't in there till after.
We, we, I'm pretty much, you know, I'm a, uh, I feel generally like I know the bounds, and then when, when we need to speak with the lawyer, when we don't. I do know that there's a, a couple extenuating circumstances related to some, uh, some, uh, uh, special education placements and other issues that, uh, have come up. Of course, the negotiations are here upon us too, but, um, I had some discussions about that and felt pretty comfortable with it, and I, that's why I wouldn't characterize it as ridiculous. High, but ridiculous would imply frivolous or unwarranted, and I felt like it was, uh, definitely high and unfortunate, but necessary, uh, in my view.
Yeah, I just, just gotta watch it.
And I, and after talking up some specifics with the superintendent about it, so, uh, we definitely have to watch it, cause it could, you know, it's, it's an expensive line item, and it,
Right.
nobody really seal, feels a tangible benefit from it, but it, um, but sometimes it's necessary evil, I felt.
I think one of the, the negotiations,
The other, you'll typically see, yeah, negotiations every three years, it typically will peak, and then the following year after the negotiation, it will dip down, and then it'll climb back up again. So, despite the,
Well, the last couple of years it has been low.
Yeah, and I was here during the last negotiation, so, I, I know what it was back then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, and it peaks in the valley.
We had some very odd arbitration items going on, and, so, that year was a little crazy, but, we just need to keep our eye on it.
Yeah. Definitely, definitely, okay, and, um, let's see, uh, we have the monthly,
I agree, thanks.
So, the monthly update, um, so in your packet you have, oh, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, um, I have a question, do we know on the legal bills, what percentage of the operational budget has been spent to date? Cause we budget.
Yeah, we probably could, we probably have that.
Well, we have it here.
It was thirteen thousand, uh, twenty-nine thousand?
Fifty thousand, forty-five thousand, so, twenty-nine point three percent.
Forty-five thousand, yeah.
I'm sorry, twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine point.
Three percent.
And there's, uh,
They'll be typically high there, so, maybe a month or so.
Right.
Do we know how that tracks in comparison to the last negotiation here at this point in time?
Look it up, I don't know.
You'd have to go back and look at it, yeah, yeah, which is easy to do.
Look it up.
That'd be useful if you wouldn't mind, Dave.
No, not at all.
It's a little more than half a year's old.
No, Dave's figures are great, and he, he keeps them.
Yeah, July, August, September, October, November, December.
But if during the last cycle you were at fifteen percent, now we're at twenty-nine percent, then that would raise a red flag.
Right.
Right.
Good to know.
Cause there's not usually a whole lot of beginning of the year.
Right.
Right.
You know.
Everybody's talking nicely.
We also have unfortunately um another set of issues to deal with with uh um and we'll talk about it under topic, it's not reasonably anticipated yet. The um, you know, there's another negotiation, or I should say another uh discussion going on about healthcare benefits across the town.
Right.
And um that's gonna require um additional legal counsel, so this is gonna be a t- tough year, and as you said, we gotta keep an eye on it and use it judiciously.
Okay, I'm waiting for you, I'm sorry.
No, no, thank you, take your, take your time.
Um so if this, if this report um in your packet is as of uh one thirty-one, and we've expended about forty-seven percent of the budget, but it does not include any January utility bills, they had, they didn't get in on time, so it doesn't include any of the heat, heat bills or the electric bills for for January. Um other than that, it's it's up to date, and we're still in pretty good shape, we did, although we did get a notification of our second nine C cut for our MECA grant.
Hmm.
Which is, you know, which is tough to handle, we have to, we have to look at that grant and see where we were able to cut and uh make up somewhere else, but um the first decrease um was in November of three thousand nine eighty-two, but the second decrease is uh is the February decrease of thirteen thousand oh seventy-seven.
Yeah, and they, they warned us that that was gonna happen.
So total decrease is. Yes, yeah, yeah.
Which is sad because of, you know, the importance of I think of MECA, but it's sad.
So. Yeah.
Can I add that um transportation costs were already up?
Already, yes, we're already short.
Because the gas, the, you know, the gas prices, and then they came back down, and it it, so they had cut that.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is kind of a.
Well, we had to cut the at the after-school busing because of that, right?
Right.
Right, we cut that a while ago.
Yeah, well, we had it last year, we were able to do it.
We did?
Yeah, the for MECA, just not for everybody.
Not, not every day, but just, you know.
Yeah, I know, but uh in the past, we've had to cut it, that, last year wasn't the first year we've had it.
Just as we've. As we've done it, yeah. No, I mean, we've had to cut some days, not all days, but this year we haven't been able to provide any at all.
We've had it for a long. Yes, some days, yes. Right, to run it all, right, yeah, it's, it's not a good thing.
It's just, it's just, it's getting tougher.
It is getting tougher.
Yeah.
So it totals about seventeen thousand, fifty-nine?
Seventeen thousand oh fifty-nine, yes, yes.
Yes, for between the both cuts, yeah.
Between the both cuts, right.
I mean, the, again, the, one of the, maybe it's a silver lining, if the cuts occur and are reinstituted, it would come back to us, not to the general.
Yeah. Correct, it would go, go back to the grants itself, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I have spoken to some of the state legislators out there, perceived that it's possibly able to be reinstituted if the budget is available. Um February was a very good month for revenue, one of the best February's ever, so I, again, it's gonna depend on what the state has for what their costs are, what their um budgeting as far as the problem's gonna be Medicaid costs, which they still haven't quite got a handle on.
Yeah. Right, actually haven't got a handle, yeah.
But the revenues for the, for the state are are quite good, it's five percent up for the year-to-year, um and February was a s- absolutely stellar uh revenue year um.
Right.
Anyway, what happened?
So we'll just wait and see what happens, so.
Is there anything else? Good, anything else you wanted to cover in that?
Um I think that's about it, any other questions at all?
One question is, when is our next um budget review uh session?
Well, our, we have um in the calendar, the school committee had voted, uh March eighteenth is our public hearing meeting.
Okay.
And that's where you vote the budget, we're still in the process of meeting with the administrators to make some of those cuts that we, you know, that we know we have to make.
Right.
To make that that amount um from the town manager. Uh we would, we would, we were trying to put it off a little bit, a couple of weeks, but we're not gonna be able to because of the timeline of of town meeting and meeting with advisory and so forth, we have to really uh get that number into.
So that has to go, the chunk of March third's meeting will have to be probably.
March eighteenth meeting.
But in advance of that, we would probably need a March third discussion.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Or if we, if you'd like to meet as a subcommittee maybe, I don't know if we have the information ready by March third.
How much was the difference again, three, a three hundred?
Okay.
Three, about three hundred fifty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's where I wrote three fifty.
Three fifty-five was the latest.
Maybe that was the latest one, I don't know, because.
Yeah, that was the latest.
Another twenty K from the town.
Yeah, that's right, we got a lot of twenty thousand from the town that helped us there.
Right.
Okay. All right, good, well, let's put that on our radar to have a subcommittee meeting sometime.
And we usually do this, it seems like every time, you know, we come up with them, uh suggested, right, Dave, and he's been doing that for years, so.
I can, can speed the method up a little.
Yes, yeah. We've done in the past is is recommended to the subcommittee, the cuts that we think we can make, and then, then the full committee is um brought up to speed after that, um during.
Right.
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 During that, the real one would be the eighteenth, yeah.
During that public hearing, yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, good, so let's plan.
Really not that much time in between, uh you know, it's just.
No, but I, if I could just ask if if perhaps there is anything that you have to find, um that you can reallocate or cut or direction you're going that we might know next week as well at the meeting?
Okay, so give you like an overview of maybe what we know.
Yeah, I, I would just like to know the progress of the meeting.
I know we have, we have a meeting um scheduled, I believe, on Tuesday with the administrators, and that was the plan of that meeting is to talk about where we can, where we can cut.
Okay, okay. Right, I realize it's a very quick, that's a quick turnaround, but um, just a general sense from, from you at that point, how things are looking.
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Excellent, so um on to the uh next topic, which is really just uh any communications uh reports from the various subcommittees?
Uh well, basically, what's going on with the uh the Board of Elders and things, I mean, uh it's gonna be interesting, we're gonna play nicely and all be in the senior center for a little while.
Yeah.
So I think that should work out for everybody.
Did you know that we're in the senior center, no?
Of course, I'm in the Social Service League, so I'm part of the vote that said that that's okay to do.
So for the audience, uh we had a terrible flood at Central Office.
Yeah.
Go ahead, yeah. Right.
And uh Dave's desk sadly was hit one of the hardest, I'm afraid.
Right, my office was hit pretty bad, yes, yeah.
That desk was pretty tired.
And uh.
I liked that desk.
I know you did, but it was pretty tired.
So um so there's a significant uh in uh damage and and claim being made through insurance, um hopefully it will result in uh obviously minimal out-of-pocket for the school beyond premium.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Uh uh I mean, beyond the deductible, and um and of course, the uh senior center uh has been gracious enough to uh host the central office
Beyond the deductible, yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
and others that are being relocated for, I think we estimate, three months?
Yeah.
Well, we hope it's sooner than that, but it could be up to, up to three months, yeah.
For some compensation, but it's not a rental thing, cause that would go against our um uh our covenant, but it's, you know, just to help cover some costs.
Yeah, yeah, and that's covered through the insurance too, so.
Yes, cause to heat the place and things like that.
Yeah, right, right, it is a beautiful place, it really is nice, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And the seniors are there Tuesday and Thursday, so.
We're very lucky to have their opportunity to to go somewhere as nice as that, nice.
Yeah, so this is a cooperation, cause we're gonna be kind of in their space somewhat, because they're there Tuesdays and Thursdays and will be theirs, you know, but we'll, you know, play nicely with each other.
Yeah. Yes, yes.
It's, it's a good thing, it's a good thing.
Good, um so we have uh, we have um the, that under control, and I know Chris Senior had negotiated that uh agreement with them.
Yes, he's helped us a lot on that, it was very nice.
Yes, with Rita and our, the social services.
I think that was a concern where there are discussion whether they're gonna try to salvage some of the sheetrock and some of the carpeting, and we had gone through this at our building, and one of the problems where if you try to salvage a wet, moist carpet, you'll end up getting mold.
Yeah. Well, we did, we, we've already, we've talked to the insurance company about that, and they are willing to replace the carpet, so that, that's.
Been a lot of respiratory problems. Yeah, because if, if it's dried out, you'll end up, so it gets wet again, you'll get respiratory problems, and the people that are physically in the homes, so
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Right.
um it's not the best ideal to try to salvage a, you know, an indoor outdoor carpet for ten cents a square foot, whatever it is, just strip it out, take out the drywall.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Well, that is the plan, yeah.
Yeah, and there's, right now, a lot of h- private homes, a lot of businesses are going through this, so it is, it's devastating, what people are going through is generally devastating anyway, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's devastating, yeah.
It's just a tough, tough one to for, for many people.
Right, totally, everywhere around us.
The problem luckily was identified and uh the fix will be permanent, uh so hopefully it will never happen again in that manner.
Yes, we just hope it doesn't happen somewhere else.
Somewhere else, yeah.
Yeah, right, and basically it was leakage, nobody was in danger, which is a very good thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, right, and it actually, it, it happened during a school vacation, so that was a good time, if it kinda happened, that was a good time.
The good thing is it happened during a school vacation.
Right.
Exactly.
So there were no more days off from school.
And our roofs are in good shape, I mean, the snow's been removed, do we have a removal, a company who removed the snow from the roofs?
We have DPW, they have the snow.
They actually went on the roofs and shoveled.
Oh, we, we hired, so I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part, we hired a company to do the snow removal on the roofs, yes, yeah.
Yes. We did, yeah, which company did we hire?
I'm not sure, the town did the hiring for us, yeah.
Right, there was a warranty on the middle, high school, so they had to use a certain type of vendor that was approved by the roof company, so.
Yes.
It had to do with the warranty and.
Got it.
Right.
Okay, yes, and.
So the roofs are in good shape.
And and we were good at that, because uh some people, some businesses and schools have had that delay and not had all their ducks in in the water, and so therefore it delayed the shoveling and therefore presented a problem, so I think we were very proactive about it, making Cohasset safe, where other towns, you know, are more retro, uh reactive about it.
Problem, exactly. We did it at the right time, yeah. Yeah.
And it delayed the shoveling, which is a real big problem, so I uh applaud the town of Cohasset being proactive about it, it was a very good thing.
It was a smart move.
Oh, totally, it's good.
Normal, yeah, yeah.
So one, one important um uh occurrence in the last few days, uh last, since we last met, is um uh just something that I think we need to bring on um to our uh public meeting here, is the Board of Selectmen uh met last night with the retired teachers.
Mm-hmm.
And uh several of us were were able to be there to uh to observe, um and will have to address this more um over, over time, but it's just important to note that um the uh the selectmen took the uh the uh position to move the retired teachers from the uh GIC plan to the so-called Maya Plan. Um and in doing so, um a number of uh retired teachers uh voiced some very valid concerns, and I think the selectmen equally um voiced some um very uh responsive uh points that ultimately the goal of the town, uh and it translates to our, to our teachers and 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 membership as well as other town employees, is to um make sure that the retirees are kept with a comparable healthcare plan at a cost-neutral um in a, in a cost-neutral way to the retiree, so um ultimately, I think the vision for the town is that we're going to uh uh have our retirees uh have a healthcare plan that is just as good as what they have now, and at the same cost that they have now. Um and over time, uh I think that message will get out, uh we'll do our best um to communicate with the uh current teachers on how these effects might uh play out on them, and especially as those people who are retiring soon.
Right.
Um and uh over time, but uh just wanted everybody to be kind of aware of that, we, not that got many of us witnessed it firsthand, but.
Can I just comment that the Maya Plan isn't a Maya Plan, it's actually Blue Cross Blue Shield, so it's not some.
Exactly, it's a purchasing group called Maya.
Right, exactly, exactly, so it gives you cost benefits by purchasing in bulk when you're dealing with healthcare, so just so that everybody understands that Maya is, that are not familiar with the hu- the way healthcare goes, is that it's not a, a company called Maya.
Right.
But it is a, it is orchestrated and administered by Maya, but it's a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan that is, has very good benefits, very good benefits.
Yeah. Oh, good.
And the, the uh other post-employment benefit committee, which is the OPEC benefit, uh OPEC uh committee, recommended those changes as well. With the proviso that there is a mitigation that would be instituted to try to prevent any significant cost problems with the present retirees and future retirees that would be close to retirement, so it went along with what the, what you saw last night, the report of selectmen, um OPEC was also in agreement with that.
Yes, it's progress.
So um, great, so if there's nothing else, um we did have a cause to go into executive session, um.
Can I just mention one other thing?
Please?
Uh so you mentioned about the, the snow removal, I got a little concerned with the, what the cost is gonna be for the town for the snow removal, so I um tried to see what other options from, what monies would be available from either the state or the federal government, um and spoke with Senator Hedlund's office, uh Representative Bradley's office, and the governor's office, to see if there's a way to uh extricate some money from the rainy day fund. Uh which, well, it's not raining, it's snowing, uh from a rainy day fund, to see if.
It's raining in a different form.
Raining in a different form, uh to see if it's possible to take some of that out of the rainy day fund, from the point of view, it's available, there's about a billion one available on the rainy day fund, typically there'll be two hundred to four hundred million per calendar fiscal year, if back into it, um looking at that.
At the state level, at the state level.
The, the state usually re- re- uh reinstitutes a two hundred to four hundred million dollar uh rainy day fund, uh funding.
Yes. Exactly.
So uh Representative Bradley spoke to me, he, he is gonna try to see if there's a way from the state point of view, I know this federal money, the, the the Federal Emergency Management uh Agency also was involved, we're trying to get monies available for the town, it may just be for that first storm, although it may be a second amount of money, it's gonna be spread across most of New England, uh the problem with the federal monies is that they're gonna likely be delayed. I think until after town meeting, my concern is that if there's a big bill that's gonna show up, then would it, would it potentially affect the schools, and that was my big concern, so um if people wanna speak to the state and uh senate and state legislature and the governor's office, to see if they can attempt to try to finagle monies from the rainy day fund, um may be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'd try.
I do, well, great, good.
And since we're discussing snow, um I have had some concerns expressed about the sidewalks in front of the school. Um particularly on Pond Street, some, those sidewalks were not um cleared, some of them weren't cleared properly, and some of the parents had this shoveling party going on.
Okay.
Um but also the front sidewalk that leads from Pond Street up to the middle high school door, uh I guess is a bit of a problem, I don't know if it was not if the snow blowers weren't used, or if it wasn't shoveled, or what, but some parents have observed students climbing over snowy mounds to get into their parents' cars. If somebody slips and falls, you know, parents are in a real rush to get in and out of there, so it could be a real danger.
Right, right, right.
And I haven't been up there, cause I refuse to go up that driveway to drop off and pick up, I think that it's a mob scene, and I drop off in the lower parking lot.
It's a tough spot to go through.
Which is, was the protocol in a previous administration, and it worked great, but I mentioned it, it never took off, so I dropped it. But that, the front sidewalk, as I said, from Pond Street up to the front doors.
Up to the school.
They were done today, I, they were, they had, they had three um, three bobcats out there today, so they, they completely pushed everything off, so.
They were done today, okay.
I mean, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen it.
Okay, good, good.
Done today.
And I thought I heard that the, you know, because the sidewalk itself wasn't done, one of the machines was down or something, they had, they had issues with the
Okay, could be.
They kept it running, but, I mean, I know that's done now, um I mean, I don't know how great a shape it's in, but it wa- it was done.
Yeah. Okay, well, like I said, there were parents talking about having shoveling parties at night.
Yeah.
So their kids could walk on the sidewalk instead of in the street, cause the streets are so dangerous.
Right, we have to watch them.
They're so narrow.
So narrow.
They did sort of the street as well, it's clear from um all the way up to Fair Oaks.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, that's about it.
Well, uh, thank you all for attending, um so we will, I guess, um uh need a motion to um go into executive session for the purpose of discussing uh well, strategy with respect to collective bargaining, uh because an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and chair so declares, so if we can.
What number is that?
This is number three.
My notes, write the whole thing down.
I'll make this out, I'll make that motion.
You can queue right in when you hit a button.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion, I'll second it.
Second from Mary?
Yeah, for the sole purpose of exiting for uh adjournment?
Yes.
While we have a vote.
Uh, we, I think that's good, we can just adjourn from there, we don't, we do not need to reconvene in open session?
Okay, so we'll adjourn.
Mm-hmm.
So adjourn.
From executive session.
Yes.
All right.
Exit for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Exit for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Right.
Just to care over here.
No, no, I'll just, just to.